Workshop meeting called to order. Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Are these on?
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, the Star Ledger, on January 2nd, 2015, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk.
First item on your agenda is items for review. Your manager's report from your work session and regular meetings of April 6th and April 8th, 2015. A couple of items that were brought up from mayor and council. Number one was the NICSIL. A meeting has been scheduled for May 5th to explore its use and the cost factors that are going to be involved with it. Secondly, the GEO system. We're currently assessing which departments are going to be interested in using it.
So Tony, you might want to do really, really brief just what NICSIL is and GEO, just in case people don't know what you're saying, just like a five second.
NICSIL basically is a reverse 911 system where it would be used for emergency purposes to reach out to the general public for notices of important matters. The GEO system tends to be a database system which will allow each one of the departments to interface with one another. And we could go into the computer database system and we would be able to find different properties or all of the properties within Asbury Park. And each one of the departments would be able to see all the information that they're going to need to pick up there. So with the GEO system, we're currently assessing which departments are going to be using it, how it's going to be paid for. Obviously, with our budget restraints this year, you're going to find is that we're not going to be able to fully implement it until 2016. But we are looking at right now as to bringing in some type of trial database where we might be able to use it on a temporary basis to see how we're going to be able to interface with it. Questions and concerns from the general public? The first issue was a crossing sign at Dill Lake Drive and Main Street. The crossing apparatus was missing. It's been referred to DOT and they have indicated that they would have a technician out to replace the missing sign. The second matter, the automotive shop at Asbury and Langford. There was a question about cars parked across the sidewalk that was referred to the police and the clothing bin on public property. That's been referred to code enforcement. It appears that both issues have now been resolved. Someone brought up the issues of the possibility of having movies shown on the wall of the sewer plant. We've talked to Madison Marquette about that. We've talked to our recreation people about that. Movies are already shown on the beach. So we're not quite sure if that would be something that would be, excuse me, something that we would be interested in initiating. The fourth item, trees on Dewitt Avenue. I've had a discussion with Teresa Jones regarding this matter. I think we've reached an agreement and we'll be working to try to resolve the matter without losing too many of the trees from Dewitt Avenue. The fifth issue was landscaping. Sixth and Seventh Avenue, the medians between Kingsley and Ocean. Public maintenance has been requested to price out landscaping alternatives for the area. The former roadway between Sunset Avenue and Fifth Avenue is at the old North Asbury Train Station. Was brought up in regards to the roadway that previously went through from Fifth Avenue to Sunset. We've been looking at the deeds. Looks like that has been one single lot since 1974 and that roadway had been vacated. We're currently reaching out to the current owners because we want to see the current deed. And the conveyance of Sixth Avenue behind the Berkeley Carteret, the conveyance of Sixth Avenue behind the Berkeley Carteret back to the city. We've asked our redevelopment attorneys to look into the matter. They've already provided me with a preliminary update and information and we're going to be following through on that for additional information.
Special event wedding applications by Tom Gilmore.
We have five special events on the agenda tonight. The first one is the New Jersey AIDS Walk, which is hosted by the center, takes place on Sunday, May 3rd at 11:00 a.m. They actually close the block in front of the center for the start and then they walk down to the beach, walk into Ocean Grove, and walk back to the center. This event, I think this is probably the fifth or sixth years that they've done this event. Any questions? Okay. Next one is the Pride Weekend Event. It takes place in Bradley and Atlantic Park. The date is June 6th. Excuse me, the date is June 7th of the actual event. Obviously, it's a weekend event, but the event that they're applying for is actually Sunday, June 7th. And, you know, they fence in the park. They have a great event, brings about probably 6,000 to 10,000 people into the city. Any questions on that one?
Can I go back to the first one?
Yeah, sure.
Normally, do they ever get in touch with the high school or the grammar school? Because they usually march, okay? But the one that you mentioned?
For the New Jersey AIDS Walk, I don't know. The center advertises that event. I mean, it's pretty well-known, but I'll find out whether they actually reach out to the high school or not.
Okay. Not necessarily the high school, but the grade school. They had an event last year where the kids walked around in pink and things like that. It was very nice. So they might want to participate in that.
So back to the Pride event. Is there any questions on that one?
I don't think ours are off. Here's his job.
Can you hear? Yeah, mine's on.
Testing, testing.
Does that thing move up?
Okay, the next event is the Carrying Canvas Event. This is, I think, the fourth year that we've run this. Laura Burnett, who's an artist, donates her time and creates a free program summer camp in the Transportation Center. Does a lot of artwork with the children and it's open to only Asbury Park youth.
How long does that one run for?
It runs from July 1st.
Oh, no wonder. Okay, I didn't see the dates up top. Okay.
The only question I have about this and concern, they're asking to waive the fees. That's going to be a flat now. We waive no fees for anybody just because if we do it for one, we have to do it for all. So if this got waived last year, I was asleep.
Well, the reason it was waived is because she gives this service for free for the children in the city.
Whose liquor license are they?
Liquor license?
But she's having, yeah, the way I read the application, they're having wine.
This is a children's program.
For first people, wine and light fair foods. Page two.
Yep, I see that, John.
Okay, so they got to use the something liquor license, which they don't say. And I'm all for the event and everything, but again, we didn't waive the fee for the Atlantic Avenue.
No, she didn't specify. Obviously, she's doing an art show here, too.
Yeah.
We'll have to go back and review this.
She's asking for two police officers, she's asking for the floor to be swept, blah, blah, blah.
The only way we reviewed this was for the camp.
Okay.
So we'll go back and find out exactly what that is.
And then the question is just a follow-up on this. And I think this is the only one, and there might be another one, where most of them say fees paid, which I'm happy to see, like it says applicant's fee. They didn't even pay the applicant's fee. I don't think anybody should get before the special events committee without at least paying that fee. And then if they don't pay that fee, they don't make it to that meeting, then they don't make it to this meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Tom, I have a question.
Yep.
This is going to be at the Transportation Center?
Yes.
Outside?
No, they actually run it in the part that's down by the tunnel. You know, if you go down the stairs, they're right in that area.
There's a landing there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So they're not really up top with the rest of the clientele that comes through for the trains. Okay, so we'll table that one?
Yeah, and then maybe break it into two applications. One for the art show and one for the camp.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, the next one we have is the Best Day Foundation. Best Day is a nonprofit corporation and they're looking to do an event very similar to the event that the Surf Rider Foundation does on the beach, giving kids surf lessons and...
Yeah, and this one is targeted for youth autism.
Yeah, right. That's actually taking place on two days, July 11th and 12th. That'll be on the surf beach.
Yep.
The final one is Back to School Celebration Day. This would take place in Liberty Park, which is right by the library. This is part of the First Baptist Church on Asbury Avenue. They do sort of a back-to-school day where they give students music and fun for the kids and they give them school supplies. Any question on that? No. Okay. Then I also put down under special events, a discussion item, which I'd appreciate some input. Every year around this time, we get a lot of requests from people who do yoga and bootcamps and things that they want to use our beach for. We really don't have anything in the special events category for a service like that. And I'm just looking for a little bit of guidance as to whether, one, we really want to have that on our beach. I spoke to Joe Bon Giovanni. Also, these take place early in the morning, before the beach actually opens. And if we put them in a certain area, then they'd still be able to clean the beach. His big concern was whether we had too many people on the beach doing instructions and if so, it'd be difficult for us to clean the beach. But as long as we put them in one special area and maybe move that during the week so they can, you know, when they clean the north beach, they'd be on the south beach and vice versa. So the question is, what I'm looking for is how would we make this work? Would we charge a fee for them or would we go out to bid like we do for other services on the beach? I'm just not quite sure how to handle it.
Do we currently have people doing it? I mean, is it currently taking place in more...
Yes.
So it's currently happening?
Right, and Joe chases them off the beach.
Is it a one-time event or is it recurring like every week, two, three times?
No, the yoga people like to be on there a couple of days a week.
Yeah.
Are they covered by our insurance or they have their own insurance?
They have no insurance. I mean, we're not protected right now. That's why we kick them off the beach.
So I would say, just, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, let them fill out a special events application like everybody else and go through that process. Whereas the fees, you write there are no fees, so we'll wing it until we redo the ordinance and see how many requests we get. But if you pick to keep on happening with no insurance and liability-wise, there's a problem.
And it's disruptive right now because there's no control from the city standpoint. But there's a lot of people who'd like to do it.
Everybody agrees, special events?
Yeah, I don't know what we should do about it yet. I mean, I have to think about it.
What do other towns do?
Most of the other towns don't allow it.
Don't allow it at all?
Yeah, and these are people who are doing it for profit. In other words, they're charging their clients to do yoga or bootcamp on our beach.
Yes, let's put them through special events or not like Johnson.
Yep, yep. Okay. I have one other item on the agenda. I don't know if you want to take that now or take it later. This is a request came from the Chamber of Commerce. For the last two years, the city has funded the printing of the Visitor's Guide with UEZ funds that are on deposit with the city right now. The approximate cost of the printing is $7,920. The Visitor's Guide is really the only piece of promotional material that the city has right now and we're lucky that the Chamber of Commerce actually goes through the design and actually putting it all together and updating it every year and everything like that. But we do need some type of piece of promotional thing, so it's a very valuable piece to bring people to the city.
I totally agree and this is 22,000, four by nine, 24-page glossy handouts. My only concern is like, why don't we just pay for it and save $700 in sales tax?
Well, it's not sales tax.
Yes, it is. Just because that's the proposal that the chamber sent us that said, including sales tax. So if the city could just pay for it, we'd save $600 to $700 in sales. Unless I'm mistaken.
Well, Jackie's here, I think. Right, Jackie? Is there a sales tax on the printing?
I include sales.
The quote.
And that's something you two can get together. If it's something we can do...
Can we have the printing company bill the city?
Well, the question is, would you have to bid?
Ah.
So that's a question we can ask Ricky tomorrow, but since it's one...
That would be under the threshold.
It's definitely under the threshold. Yeah, you just need to get competitive quotes.
It's under the...
It's under the threshold.
$1,000, I don't think we'll have a problem with that.
We just need to get the quotes.
You need to get competitive quotes.
We need to get three quotes.
If that's going to slow down, then we'll do that next year. Mind you, Tom, that's all Ricky tomorrow, but I think everybody's in favor of this, correct? Yeah. So whatever works, let's make it work.
If I could just jump back for a second on the second item that Tom brought forward about the use of the beach by for-profits. If council decides as a policy call that you're okay with this, I think the special events process is the right way to go. That way, I know with special events, they're all required to have insurance coverage. You can easily amend your fee schedule. The fee schedule right now is done by way of a resolution. So we could work new fees into that fee resolution at the next meeting or whenever you're ready to make a recommendation forward to cover what you feel is reasonably appropriate to charge for-profits to use the beach for, whether it's a weekly basis or several days a week. I guess it merits a little bit of further review. And I do know there are some beaches that allow for yoga, you know, in the early morning hours, so we could check and see what they do elsewhere.
Well, most of the ones that I did check, that yoga's a free yoga thing, that anybody can come and join in, as opposed to the ones that are asking us right now really want to run their business and bring their clients to the beach. So it's just...
My understanding of the yoga that's on the beach, it's like you pay five bucks to the instructor. I'm not suggesting that's not for profit.
No, no.
I'm just saying they're not raining in big bucks.
Right, no, you're absolutely correct. Absolutely correct. That's why I don't know how to...
Yeah, 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 no, I'd like an opportunity to think about it a little bit, but I'm fine with doing this special events.
If nothing else, they're paying a $50 application fee and we're making sure they have insurance.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Your first presentation tonight is Cablevision, the Cookman Avenue Project. Don Viapri, the government of affairs director for Cablevision, and Jeff Hopkins.
This project was facilitated by the development project that's taking place on Bond Street.
I don't think that microphone's well-heeled.
It is.
Yeah, it is. And to explain that in some detail here is Jeff Hopkins, who's our construction supervisor. But before he starts, I'd like to reinforce the point that this project, which will take about three and a half weeks and is slated to be completed before the Memorial Day weekend, if it goes forward, will not in any way interfere with the pedestrian traffic of either residents or businesses on the Cookman Avenue side. We had some meetings prior to this evening in the manager's office with the assistant engineer and we've satisfied all the questions that are on. And we thought it would be very important to come before council in order to mention what is taking place and take any inquiries that you might have. Jeff?
The project is to run new, our service lines down from Bond Street down Cookman Avenue. And I believe you have an overview of the project in front of you. And we're going to vacate the alleyway in the back for rehabilitation. It runs from 205 Bond Street toward the back of Johnny Mac's development project there. So what we'll do is we'll work through the existing sidewalk to place our lines underneath the concrete with small windows that'll be placed. And then we'll be placing approximately the lid size of the vaults in the paver area. And they'll be approximately 48 by 30 or so, the lids, and they'll be, you know, in that area. So once the project's completed, the affecting concrete will all be replaced. And we're using the same contractor that did it the first time around, so you get the quality that you're looking for and the consistency in the product.
What year was the first time around?
I believe that was done, I was told about four years ago when it came to the sidewalk replacement down Cookman Avenue on the 700, it'll be a 700-odd number block, which would be the north side of Cookman.
Why would you need to do it four years later?
Well, because we're going to be impacting the concrete.
This alleyway is where all the cables are now. The condo is being built here. This Savoy has said, get your stuff out of there right away, so they have to reroute everything. We asked them originally, so it doesn't affect so many businesses, can you go down Bond and up Madison? Because they can't because of the JCPN outlets in the sidewalk. So this is the only route. And so the main concern was, they've been great, I've met them on site, they came right over to City Hall, they got every home business address and certified letters, they've been knocking on doors, you know, no lack of services to any business, showroom, anything, the conovers, people will be able to get in and out. So it's just mainly, this is just getting the word out there, this is going to happen, this has to happen, because if not, there is no cable vision from this block, because it's all going to throw down this alleyway.
Okay.
And the only way they can go is this way. And the only thing is, they have to do it fairly quick. It should be done before Memorial Day, but it is going to, you know, we just didn't want any business owner to be surprised. Guess what? They're showing up and digging up and nobody told anybody it was happening. So I appreciate you guys coming here tonight, making this presentation.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions for me at this point about the construction process?
No. Like I say, I met you on site. The government did something, I believe, in winter. It was a freezing day and you had to take your shirt off.
So you sent certified letters to businesses?
Certified letters will be out tomorrow because they will be, I wanted to get them approved by the council. And I have a copy of, a copy of the two different letters that we'll send out. One will be certified, will be going to the building owners. The notifications of the business operators will be hand-delivered so they can address any questions they may have. We can address those at the time when we explain what's going on. We would like to start the project the 27th, which will be one week from today.
I'm sorry, that was one of my questions. What's the start date?
We'd like to start the 27th, next Monday if possible, so we can be done prior to the Memorial Day holiday.
So let me ask you this, when you're ripping up the sidewalk and replacing, you rip up the sidewalk, I assume?
Well, during the construction process, we'll only cut small windows to work through and then we'll backfill those with the concrete dust and tamp it down so it's, you know, flat at that point. When it comes time to replace the concrete, it'll take about three days, as per the contractor, to remove the full width of the sidewalk and have the new one placed. So that'll take about a three-day period to do all of, from Bond Street all the way down to Cookman to Main and around past the existing Johnny Mac's bar.
And then what would be, when you're pouring the concrete and that three-day process, what's in front of the business to make sure people can walk through? Is there some sort of...
We could, well, they're going to be doing it in sections and it's not going to go all the way up to the building, so there will be a pathway between the building and the handicap section of the sidewalk we'll be replacing.
Okay. And is this like seasonal? Can you do this in the winter?
Well, they have to get out of the alleyway. It's kind of a timeframe.
Okay. I was just going to say, you know, it'd be obviously easier probably for businesses in the winter. So who's kicking us out of this alleyway, just out of curiosity? Who's, where the wires are now is owned by who?
It's, I guess that's going to be the redevelopment of 205 and 209 Bond Street, where it comes through the archway. It used to come through.
The Savoy?
No. I guess it's Dilger.
The condo is being built opposite the bar on Bond Street.
Okay. Okay, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, excuse me. It's unnecessary that we have policemen out there, police officers, but we need their services.
We will have police detail as needed. When I talk to the township, you know, assistant engineer, we'll probably use them when we cross Bond Street underground. But other than that, we'll be working in the sidewalk areas. I don't believe we'll need police traffic control in that area. But as we need, we will be buying parking spaces where the areas we're working at the time.
Can you send me a copy of the letters that you're sending, or send a copy of the letter that you're sending out to Tony and then he'll forward that to me?
I have them already.
Okay, so if they go out in the mail tomorrow and you want to start on Monday, that gives business owners a week, less than a week to respond with any concerns, right?
Well, we're going to go, that's for the building owners. We will actually go to the businesses and knock on their doors.
In addition?
And they'll hand deliver.
Okay, oh, great, great.
The owners will be handled one way with a registered letter, with a certified letter. And then when it comes to the actual building, I mean, the business operators, we will visit them and we've already been talking with many already.
Okay, okay.
Can you send those letters to the property owners?
I just want to see a copy, just so I just want to see what's in there.
Certified and first class?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Your second presentation on your agenda is a Dill Lake dredging project. Don Brockle and Dill Lake Commission and staff from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
Castle, thanks. Are we on? Good, okay, there we go.
Council, thanks for hearing the Dill Lake Commission and the DEP's joint presentation to you. I'm Don Brockle, the chairman of Dill Lake Commission. It's a long road from Sandy of October 2012. Asbury Park waterfront and also Dill Lake got slammed by Sandy. And, you know, we did a lot of hands-on to get the material out, but we still need more help. We need dredging of the main lake, which goes from the ocean, basically all past railroad towards Asbury Park High School. We requested approximately $6.9 million through our studies. Initially, we were going to use a special program from FEMA, but we were rejected from that. And it turned out we used a FEMA, a USDA program, NRCS, National Resource Conservation Services money. And they had Sandy money also used for water and... And they had Sandy money also used for water and dredging operations. So we piggybacked on that, we were authorized $1 million, and we actually received $1 million. The state of the Jersey is actually sponsoring Deal Lake, and paying 10% of that fee, $100,000 approximately, and the NRCS is coming up with about $900,000. So Asbury Park and the Deal Lake Commission is basically, and the neighboring towns, six other towns, are receiving $1 million. We have some issues with that because we have some deadlines. And one of the deadlines is a July deadline for dredging. Well, obviously, we do not, none of us want to be dredging dredge spoil in the middle of the summer. So what the DEP is here, and myself is here, to present a plan for a fall-winter dredging. And I have representatives from DEP, Dan Kennedy, the assistant commissioner of DEP, to make that presentation.
Mayor, deputy mayor, council members, thank you for the time tonight. Want to introduce some staff that we have with us. Cindy Rendazzo, she's our local government liaison, you may know her already. Eric Doyle, he's one of the leads in our coastal engineering group, who will be the project manager for this project. And Sherry Sheffron, she's an environmental scientist that works for us here. She's one of the quarterbacks of our coastal lake strategy, so we have effort going on in many of the coastal lakes in Monmouth and Ocean Counties, most of which is in response to Sandy. But many of these issues are really longstanding issues that Sandy clearly kind of put an explanation point on. We also want to thank Deal Lake Commission and all the volunteers that do great work around here. Clearly, there's a lot of work that goes on with that sweat equity of the volunteers during times like this with Earth Week, Earth Day coming up. But the kind of work we're talking about here can't be done by volunteers. So this is a large overdue regional issue. As Don mentioned, the money that we have available from the federal government blended with state money has a clock ticking on it. We would like to talk to you today about approval of a site where we would have the dredge sit and de-water. So what that means is before the dredge materials are taken off-site and properly disposed of, the water needs to basically sit and saturate out of the water. So there's an area that Eric will talk to you about in the eastern portion of the lake in Asbury Park that we have targeted as ideal for this site. So that's what we're asking for here. We know that Deal Lake serves a crucial role for the region, not just Asbury Park, but we are very sensitive to the fact that Asbury Park is being asked for, to be the host of this de-watering site. We think there's tremendous benefits to consider. So here's our timeline. We have to ask for an extension for this money to make sure that we can do the work in the fall. The money runs out technically in, over the summer, but we understand clearly that having this kind of activity taking place during the tourism and recreation season is clearly not appropriate. Federal government also has some limitations on the work based on fish species, spawning habitat, et cetera. That also puts us in a little bit of a box in terms of when we can actually do the physical work. So we believe that we can get an extension to the end of the year, which we'd like to start the work in the fall, after the beach season. As a someone who grew up in this area, I understand the summer season doesn't always end in Labor Day, so we are sensitive to that, so Eric will talk to you about the timing. We think that there's great benefits, including no cost to the city, trying to set the timing up so there's minimal impact on your operations here and the residents as much as possible. We think this project will be part of the solution to help relieve the area of flooding, improve Deal Lake from an aesthetic and recreational perspective, and open it up to the uses that have historically been used at Deal Lake, you know, when you think about 100 years ago. We all have kind of a vision for Deal Lake of being more than just somewhere where stormwater goes, but we think that it can be much more than that. So dredging the entire lake is the big picture. This will get a good part of that accomplished in the immediate future. So I'm going to pass it to Eric.
Thank you. As you said, my name's Eric Doyle. I will be the project manager for the dredging of this portion. The NRCS money was allocated to remove sandy sediments that had overwashed from the beach and dune. Basically, we're looking to do the eastern portion of the lake. We want to dredge to minus four. As you can see here, we're looking to do the eastern portion of it. We figure, based on, based on the available funding, based on the available funding, we'll be able to get about 10,000 to 12,000 yards of material removed. The section in yellow is the area we're looking to dredge. The section in blue is actually the area we would like to get permission to utilize for the temporary de-watering site. We would look to have what's known as a disposal agreement reached with the city, putting certain caveats in there to address your concerns, such as protection of the concrete bulkhead, the gatehouse, remedies for how the site will be prior to, how it will look afterwards, and basically try to lay it all out for you as far as, please allow us to have an easement from, we're anticipating mid-September to mid-December. What we're looking to do is go out to bid sometime in the June-July timeframe, so we're going to have a contract in hand around the early September. We would anticipate about two weeks in order to get the CDF set up. What's there right now is pretty much a clear grass area. What we need to do is we're going to lay some geotextile fabric down as a barrier between native soils and dredge material, then encapsulate that with basically Jersey barriers and hay bales to kind of formulate a wall. It'll be settled off in two different sections. The dredger will go out mechanically, remove the material from the lake, put it into a container by barge, bring it over to the CDF, transfer it into the CDF, and allow it to de-water. It's going to be work so that, since there's two sites, one site will be de-watering while he's dredging and placing in the other site. Once that's, once Site A de-waters, they will then take that material, load it into trucks, and you can see the black lines that'll go basically from the beach out to Route 71 and be hauled off to their disposal location. Once he's done that site, they'll basically flip-flop back and forth, continuously working.
Are there two sites? I'm sorry.
It's basically, the site in blue would be split into two.
South of the Flume House, if you notice, that's a large, large grass area, a sandy area.
That whole site there is split into two?
Yes. Yep, yep. So that would basically be Cell A and Cell B. We would anticipate to be getting summers in a neighborhood of 1,000 to 1,200 yards per week. You may see a time where the dredger might not be there for a day, depending on how fast things de-water. So I just want you to be aware of that, you know, depending on the capacities and all that, and the hauling schedule that, you know, don't be concerned if you see a day or so where you don't see activity. It will be continuous throughout. They'll be working during the normal work hours per the city, Monday through Friday. We will have weekly meetings to which the city can send a representative. We'd like to address all your concerns. As I said, I'll be the project manager. If there's anything that pops up, you know, I would ask that you please contact me, and we'll try to get it resolved as soon as possible. Typical noise is nothing more than an excavator and a couple of boats that will be pushing the barges to where they need to be and moving material. I think I just about addressed everything. The, I know smell was a potential concern for some. One of the ways we can address that is utilize a coagulant that'll help speed up the process, thereby reducing the time that you would have any sort of such smell.
Just a couple of quick questions. Tony and myself, we met and we talked about this already. I thought we agreed that you could set up early, but we wouldn't start any after October 1st.
Yes, that's what, that's why I was, yes, exactly. And that's what we'll have in the spec.
I've also, so I want that, is part of the contract, I want.
Yes, it is in there currently from our talks.
Okay, and I didn't see it, maybe I didn't hear. We also wanted a direct route for the trucks to come down 71, go down to the State Highway, take Corley's Avenue and Neptune, and right up to the dumps, not Asbury Avenue, so we want that in the contract.
Yes, we can, absolutely. We'll direct that.
Also, as much as the timeframe and money runs out December 31st, supposedly, and we agree with you, and it probably will, we also want that in the contract where, okay, you can't do anything from January to June, so if this project doesn't finish in December of '15, you show back up in June of '16.
No, sir.
I know, but that's.
It's, here's, we will have a contract timeframe. That'll be a 90 or 100-day contract, and that's it. You know, it'll be spelled right out. The funding is limited to December 31st, 2015. All work must be completed.
Okay, fantastic. They were my three concerns, and they may even be in here, I just.
We've since updated the spec from our talks, so, yes.
Right.
And I'll be providing that to you, you know, pretty quickly thereafter.
Right, because there's a January to June kind of block.
Yes, that was from a previous project that we just, you know, to get a draft spec together, that's what we kind of brought in.
And then there's this five-year lease or easement here?
Yes, that was for, that was, that's our typical disposal agreement. As I said, I, you know, I've talked to the mayor about this, we can, obviously, we're going to limit it to 90, potentially 100 days, but that's it. You know, again, they would start construction of the CDF around about the 15th, will not be able to drop in the water and start dredging until October 1st, and then, you know, basically be done by December 1st, and allow another two weeks to remove all the material, all the concrete barriers, geotextile fabric, and then basically come back, top seed and soil, and top soil and seed.
The last one was just so that edge along the lake there is going to be simply a hay or a concrete barrier?
It's basically, you're going to have Jersey barriers outlined in the full outline, and then in the middle to split Cell A and Cell B, as well as hay bales on the outside of that. And it kind of acts as like a double wall to whoever.
It slopes into the lake as it is standing. It is, right, it's a line.
Yes.
You need that, like some significant barrier there. I'll have you ring. Right, right.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And they don't dredge within 25 feet of the wall.
The wall.
I have two quick ones.
Yeah, just one thing, because, I don't know, I asked Tony, I said, when we met, you had a map that showed the elevations of the lake, and when that, can we get a copy of that map?
Uh, yes, I believe that was provided to me from.
Just because, I think that would help our fire department immensely, just because I didn't realize how, I mean, if I was a fireman, the car drove into the lake, and I said, "Let's go get the boat, and it's only two feet deep, we don't need the boat." So, and the elevations are only two feet deep, and they're only going to make it.
It's, while that is true, there's also significant silting, so it's not like you would want to go walk across the two feet. You will sink up to five feet.
It may be a benefit just to have.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have our department, just to have that. So if we can get a copy of that map?
Yes, absolutely.
And you'll definitely want one afterward, right? So.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we will do pre- and post-dredge soundings.
The Deal Lake Commission has that map, gentlemen. Okay, I'll get your copy. Do you need it for your deliberations or not? Amy's got questions.
Yeah, I just have a quick one. So, one, I'm thrilled to be dredging Deal Lake. I'm assuming there's a plan to do all of Deal Lake. This is in conjunction with that plan? Pardon?
$38, $90.
So, so if you had to estimate a timeframe for all of Deal Lake?
Before I die.
Okay. There are that question? And then this is more, I mean, this might even be more for Tom Gilmore. So, Tom, you know, we have, well, I don't know if Johnny Mac's doing the canoes, but you also have Stand Up Paddle, who use both of those areas of the lake, so if you could reach out to them and give them the same time, I mean, I don't know that they use them in October, but if you could at least give them a heads up that equipment's going to start being there and as of September something, to just give them a heads up. That's it. That's all I got.
If I could just ask a quick question. The form that was part of the package, the standard dredge material disposal agreement that speaks of the five-year easement, so that's just a form, and this would be modified to reflect that it's only through 12/31/15?
That was just a baseline, here's a general idea of how it is, and we will send it for tail.
And include the other items that council is now addressed with you? Okay.
We're also discussing with the county, because right now the dredge spoil is going to be basically taking the county dump, possibly, could go somewhere else. We're looking to, talking to the county about getting a reduced fee so we can take more dredge spoil out of that area. We want to do that complete area from Norwood to the ocean. Right now, we only do about a, a little bit more than half, right? So we want to do a little bit more than that. So our goal is to do the whole area now and get it done.
We're going to authorize up to the funding limit. So, I mean, that's why I say 10,000 to 12,000 based off of our numbers, you know, back in the past, when we were chickers on the work. But again, if the prices come in favorable, we're doing 13, 14,000. Till our money lands out.
And additional de-watering, obviously, it's a big lake, as you know, you know, this is not the only de-watering site for Deal Lake. I mean, it's going to have to be other locations closer to where the dredge spoil is taken. So, yeah, Ennerlinck's got to step up, Allenhurst's got to step up, they all have to step up and provide sites down in the future. So I just want you to know that.
And everybody has to realize, this is step one of many steps. This is not going to stop flooding. So I don't want everybody to go, "Oh, we stopped all the flooding." No, but this is the first step to stop the flooding by getting as much as we can out, especially, and if we don't do this, we blow a million dollars.
Right. And as you know, we're working with the Corps of Engineers on a separate issue with the flume, to automate the flume, there's going to be a separate contract to automate the flume, so we can open it more often from remote locations without having to go down there. We'll have cameras, TV cameras, lights, the whole bit, to see what's going on for remote locations. We're very nervous about the replenishment project, and we're watching it on a daily basis, they're recording on a daily basis. And for the next two years, the Corps of Engineers has to keep the flume clean, not only for, you know, flooding issues, but also for the herring issues. So right now, they're staying about 400, 500 feet away from the jetty, and that's going to happen, that's the end. They're putting a little bit more sand in Lock Arbor and Allenhurst due to that, in that case. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Cindy can go on the case.
You're the one who gave that was my card, so that if you think of anything after a certain month, you know, call me.
All right, thank you.
It's all different, so anything beyond this.
Yes, anything.
Your next matters on your agenda are by Pat Vasano. First is temporary development proposal for Asbury Lanes. The second is a proposed dollar store, an abatement for a proposed dollar store on Main Street.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're here to talk about two issues that Tony mentioned. First is the Asbury Lanes outdoor area. I have my team here tonight, if anyone has any questions. Basically, what we're asking for is a subsequent developer agreement from the council, so that we can proceed to the next step and go on to the planning board. The subsequent developer agreement would allow us to use the property as a subsequent developer for four months, basically, till September. We have a lease agreement with Asbury Partners. When we made arrangements to sell them the lanes, or trade them the lanes for other land, is what actually we did, they agreed to give us an outdoor area to be used in conjunction with the bowling alley. And they were kind enough to grade the area off and fence it for us, for us to set up summer activities. So the summer activities that we would, we will be proposing to the planning board include an outdoor barbecue area. The lanes management will be handled by the Thaheed Brothers. I think everyone knows them from Cross and Orange, and they've been operating the lanes for the last three years. And then they have discussions with Chris, sorry about the last name, Biola, who is the, one of the members of a company called The Taco Truck. The Taco Truck, though it's called The Taco Truck, has several brick-and-mortar locations, including the High Line to New York City and in Princeton. It's a company with about 150 employees, and they're looking for more brick-and-mortar locations. Hopeful that we'll be able to enact the subsequent development agreement, and the Hopeful that we'll be able to enact the subsequent development agreement and the boys will have an opportunity to show you what they could do this summer. Our long-term hope is develop the land that we own, Vince Gifford and myself own, the land that's on Kingsley Avenue across from Porta. And we'd like to be able to develop that into a restaurant sometime in the future when the long-awaited plan amendments are finally adopted and we'll actually be free to once again build on the land that we, that we own. So for this summer, we would like to try as an experiment outside the lanes, the concept. It's a family concept of barbecue. We pitched it last year to the council, but unfortunately, private individuals are precluded from developing in the waterfront redevelopment area. So the first step in doing anything in W R A, the correct way, is to first become a subsequent developer, which is why we're here tonight, asking for you to approve our application to be subsequent developers, though it may only be for four months. It's an important four months, as we all know, as beach dwellers. Any questions?
I, I got nothing.
No, I guess not.
Counsel, just wanted to clarify a couple of issues that we need to clarify with the Development Council. The CDF moving program, such as the agreement, this is just the presentation, the, which is actually a pre-developed agreement, this is not subsequent development, we have a redevelopment role in the plan, simply defined as proposed use, which is, it's not. The, um, the property owner is Asbury Partners, she's also a developer for the waterfront, so we have to have an agreement that involves them, they can decide on the vote in the capacity, because the landlord is one of them, as well as the master of the property. So that hasn't been finalized yet, unfortunately, we're trying, but that's the agreement, so they can be open in the summer, because we don't want to get, trying to put this in the money, but somehow, we haven't. So we will be back on, and those issues, we will be on the agenda Wednesday night is the first step in that process, which is proving of the escrow agreements, it's a front end. But it's, it's being worked on and ahead of the most needed, they totally not met with Pat and he passed through details, also other issues, so we're trying to get it approved as quickly as possible.
That's just what I was, no, that was my good, I did that clarify.
So, so what is the next step? Forget Wednesday, that's an easy step. What's, what's the next step?
The next step is getting the agreement between Vasano and Asbury Partners and the city to resolve and get that back to council, which we're hoping to have the next council meeting, and then the planning board approvals, and then they're running through the sign.
Okay. Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Pat?
I'm thrilled, thank you. The second, the second matter that we have before you today is a, a real development site on Main Street. I've been very active in trying to bring Main Street around into the mainstream because we have a high traffic count on Main Street. I know, you know, I've, I've worked hard on Cookman Avenue and Cookman Avenue is doing really well and Main Street is looking better and better. We have Girls from Seed to Sprout that we know we like to go there for lunch now and there's Yoga Basin and other, other businesses that I helped bring onto Main Street, such as Tapatia and now the, the microbrew that we've begun to work on through, through your blessings. So this proposal is for the block that is between Fourth and Third Avenues. And about a year ago, I went to the planning board after I purchased the Getty Gas Station site and we got a preliminary approval to put up ninety-five hundred square feet on that site, pending us figuring out what we're going to do with the parking. And for me to figure out what to do with the parking, I also needed to figure out who the tenant was going to be for that ninety-five hundred square feet before I built it. So we, we were pretty comprehensive in looking for possible tenants and the one tenant that seemed the most interested is a, is the Dollar Tree. Now, I don't want you to think, okay, well, now another dollar store on Main Street, because Dollar Tree is a little more than just another dollar store. They're the most successful single price point store in the United States with over five thousand stores. In fact, they have recently purchased the Family Dollar Stores and that makes them the largest single point retailer with almost ten thousand stores. This is a very professional company and they are going to bring benefits to the city of Asbury Park on many levels. One level is they hire locally. There'll be approximately twenty-nine jobs created through opening this store and they do hire locally. Most of those jobs are above the minimum wage. There's managers, assistant managers, cashiers, stock people, that all advance. Additionally, it's a very clean, well-lit store with windows, unlike some of the other lesser dollar stores you may see on Main Street. And then, once you put a store like this in, the lesser stores may not be able to compete as well, which opens up those locations for redevelopment, if you understand what I'm saying.
So you're saying your store can put other busi-?
Well, maybe some lesser ones or maybe the Dollar, maybe the, the Family Dollar, the windowless store that needs so much work on Main Street may not have to be there since the same company owns the brand new one down the street, is what I meant to say.
I'm not sure that's your strongest argument.
Well, it may not be, but all I'm saying is, a nice new dollar store that'll have twenty-nine new employees and offers a single price point in a demographic that needs the price point could be a benefit to the city.
Excuse me?
Yes.
You have two dollar stores, right? On this side of town?
Two.
No dollar stores and no on the west side? How about putting it there?
It's, uh, the whole town is one square mile. I find it very refreshing to walk from one side of the town to the other and I don't...
So we're going to have competition among the stores?
No, I think that the people from all over Asbury Park would not have any difficulty at all walking to Main Street. And if they did, there, there's a bus that runs up and down. So they can definitely get acc- everyone in the city of Asbury Park will have access to that store and they will create twenty-nine new jobs. So I think that those are, are benefits for the city.
So the Dollar Tree bought the Family Dollar?
Uh, yeah, that was a public deal that was done about a year ago. They now own that company as well.
But Carl, and correct me if I'm wrong, the abatements that we've given out in the past have been for needs that we haven't already serviced. So arguably, we've already serviced the dollar store need because we have two dollar stores, whereas say Lake House, which was an abatement that we did a few months ago, that seems to be one of its kind in this neighborhood. We don't have multiple music store lesson places.
Yeah, although we usually don't handle the, the Main Street applications, as you referenced, the purpose of the abatement agreement is to act as an incentive for, to draw businesses into the community to promote development. One of those reasons is to try and create carrot for certain needs that aren't being met for the community, and the chances of businesses to come and locate you. For example, for example, be a, you know, a large, relatively large size grocery store. It's something the town doesn't have on Main Street in that area. If someone's trying to come in and they're trying to brew that business, you know, an abatement agreement is one tool you have to try and attract that business. So if you're judging your comments or position, it's going, well, we have the dollar store segment being served by two businesses, we don't need to attract another of that type of business. And that's, there's one of the, one of the reasons.
The other fact is, looking at the numbers right now, the current taxes on the property are four thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. If the property were just to be leased the way it is, you know, turning the service station into a store over the next twenty-two years, which is the term of the Dollar Tree store, the city would bring in a hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. With the Dollar Tree, with the abatement over twenty-two years, the city will bring in six hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. These numbers came from Eric, your tax assessor. The cost to the city over twenty-two years, if you grant the abatement, is twenty thousand dollars, over twenty-two years. The Dollar Tree store is, is going to help bring more people to Main Street, service a need and create jobs. It's a, you know, it's a good corporate model and that's why there's five thousand of them already in the United States, because it works and people need it.
So my, my counter to that, Pat, would be that it is a huge corporation that has stores everywhere and probably doesn't need a tax abatement. So, and if you look at the tax abatement program, just over the five years, the municipal portion would be, without the abatement, seventy, if they, if they were to go forward with the development, seventy-three thousand two hundred, as opposed to with the abatement is five thousand, fifty-two thousand, six hundred. So obviously, when we're comparing it to no development, it doesn't make sense, but there's more incentive for the city to, if they were to come in without the abatement. And I guess the question is, is it a small business like Lake House that's all local guys building their way up? Or is this a corporation and do they need?
I'm, I'm going to tell you the answer to that and I was surprised by their answer, but I, and thinking about it, it probably isn't a surprise. They said, you know, we have stores across the United States and New Jersey is the hardest market for us to develop because of the high property taxes, New Jersey and California. It's very difficult when you're selling items for one dollar to pay twenty-seven thousand dollars in property taxes, which is what it would be. So when you're selling things for one dollar, you said, you know, it's, it doesn't fit our model. So typically, you see Dollar Tree, like in Neptune, they're next to the Starbucks in the strip mall. Usually, the Dollar Trees are not in the freestanding, they're usually in a, a strip mall and they pay what's called a CAM charge. And the CAM charges, they're like twenty-seven thousand dollars. You got to be kidding me, for nine thousand feet? And I'm like, sorry, you know, we have an undeveloped beachfront. That's not really their problem. I mean, the, the key in bringing everyone's taxes down, not meaning to go off topic, is to build those three thousand condominiums we were promised in nineteen eighty-six. And until they kick in, I mean, it's, it's hard. And they, they, we do not have a lease with them. They were really taken back when we told them the number twenty-seven thousand. They said, that's not in our budget. And the five-year abatement, you're going to get to your twenty-seven thousand with them in year six. But the way the five-year abatement is structured is it, it goes up in steps every year.
Sure.
So that the first year they open, and they didn't even sell one loaf of bread for a dollar, they're not on the hook to pay the city two thousand dollars that month in, in taxes. So, you know, at a certain point, the taxes actually become higher than, I can only charge so much rent. So it, it really is important for them to, to get the abatement for, to work. So it is a big company, but they have a big area to decide where they're going to put a store. They don't really need Asbury Park. I kind of feel like I need them more than they need me and I did try so many different options of people and they were not, you know, they were like, oh, Asbury Park's not ready yet, Asbury Park's not ready, it's not developed enough.
Asbury Park's not ready for a dollar store?
No, 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 I said not, not other companies, other companies. You know, that's why, you know, you, you know, it's hard to bring it. I mean, you have, of course, you have, you know, Dunkin' Donuts, which works on Main Street and you have a, have a McDonald's and then further down, you have, have a Burger King. But on Main Street is where you get the Nationals, your Rite Aids, your Dollar Tree, that's where you get on Main Street. And then on Cookman Avenue is where you get like the, you know, the edgy stuff, you know, they're not going to ever, I would never say, oh, let's put Dollar Tree on Cookman Avenue, obviously.
What's Dollar Tree's thinking if they have a space already with the Family Dollar? Like they're going to, I mean, why wouldn't they just take Family Dollar over and make it their Dollar Tree?
I think it's probably, yeah, it seems like that, that store is kind of at the end of its life expectancy and it, and to have a nice new store, you know, with fresh...
But it's going to be cheaper to rehab than build from scratch.
They don't own that, they do not own that location. Family Dollar does not own that location. It's, it's leased.
Right, like this one, by the way.
Yeah, and I don't think the, the current landlord's trying to sell whatever he can, so.
Any questions? Best pitch, that's all we got, though.
Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
But one thing.
Agreed.
Always leave it to John to be the bad guy.
Okay.
If we do go forward in this, obviously you're going to be opening another escrow account.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, I don't think everybody told you that, so. Oh, I know, but I mean, that was something we passed a couple meetings ago, from here on out, everybody has escrow accounts, so the cost is not incurred by the taxpayers.
Yes.
I just, I know you did one for the beachfront thing, but nobody told you about this one, so.
Thank you. Your next item on your agenda is Deputy Chief Anthony Salerno. First request is a fifteen-minute parking space in front of five sixteen Summerfield Avenue and a handicap parking space in the five hundred block of Lake Avenue. Good evening.
That's, that's pretty much it. We're looking for a fifteen-minute parking space at five sixteen Summerfield Avenue. We've got a brand-new business there. There is limited parking. In fact, there's no parking, probably because of the businesses and companies in the area. And this new business has requested, and we did a traffic search and it looks like it's in the best interest of the business to provide one there. The next one is the handicap parking space, five hundred block of Lake Avenue. This is right where the Beer Garden is. There is a curb already set up for handicap access. There are two handicap spaces on that block, but both are down by Moonstruck, which would be inaccessible for someone of a handicap status. So we're asking for the handicap parking space to be approved. It'll be up near the corner, right near the Beer Garden.
Questions for the chief?
Not on this, but a, a John question. Again, not this whatsoever, but like, when somebody comes before, say John Moore, fourteen oh seven, fourth Avenue, wants a handicap parking spot in front of his house because he needs, when John Moore passes away, do we take away that parking spot?
Yeah, in fact, we have a couple of those requests that came in to us recently. We get it from citizens and we also have the officers that know many times who they got the handicap parking space designated for. And we have removed parking spaces that were handicapped in the past. We'll continue based on the fact that the need doesn't exist.
Okay, good, because I was driving by a couple of those ways, I guess, those people don't even live there anymore, why is that still there?
Yeah, in fact, sometimes we just don't know about it, so if we get told, we do the research and make sure and then we present to take it away.
Okay, thanks, Carl.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Barry, thank you, chief.
Both of these ordinances are on the agenda for introduction at Wednesday Eve's meeting.
Okay, your next item on the agenda, uh, is review of property maintenance ordinance. Okay, your next item on the agenda is a review of property maintenance ordinance.
It referenced pro-rated amount per section 2D previously. So that was changed to 2E because that's what, that's the paragraph that references the pro-rated amount. If you'd like me to go in order of the questions that I understood.
Let's go back for one sec, Larry. Before we open it up to the public, this city manager decided to pull it up. So, we don't know why it was pulled. So, let's address that first, why it was pulled. And then Warner and some other people brought up some other things. So, it was pulled before it got to Mayor Council. So, why was it pulled, and what corrections were made that you guys pulled it? So, to pull it, you had to make some corrections.
Originally, there were some concerns, right, after it was read, about contradictions in the ordinance. There was one issue around the, basically around...
There was two issues, right?
Dramatical areas that made it inconsistent.
There was one about what you corrected, about the scheduling of the fees. And the second one was about the online, that I didn't catch. And you said online, and then it was changed to, or you changed as well to say "may."
To "may."
Instead of, that we would put it online, because you said, "We have the capability to put it online."
And, okay, so did the corrections, is this the one where I questioned, like, the pro-rated?
Yes.
Set that out?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, did you want me to address the questions that I understood were raised by the public? As I pointed out, the only correction was that section in the fee box there on page four, where I changed, where it says pro-rated amount per section 2. Now it is E, because E was previously, that was the type of error. And then the other change, I'm sorry, there was a second. And that was based on, Mr. Mayor, your concern about the, oh, paragraph 8. Shall establish, it should be, actually, that should be "may." I'm not sure why that isn't in there. But the question was, you said that we don't have the ability to do an online registry. So I agreed to make it "may," establish an online registry of all properties registered with the city every ordinance.
That's number 8?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that gives us the option to do it at some point in the future if we don't have the ability to do it now. And there were other questions that were raised by the public. Did you want me to go through those, as I understood them, or?
Please.
Okay. The first that I was asked about was the fact that there was no reference to summer or seasonal homes in the ordinance. And that's just because, you remember that I did a presentation on the abandoned properties ordinance? And under that ordinance, or actually, the state statute that deals with abandoned properties, there's an exemption for seasonal properties. And it excludes them unless they meet the threshold criteria of not having been occupied for six months prior, and then two of the secondary criteria, which normally is just one. So, seasonal rentals or seasonal properties are exempted under the abandoned properties. The reason they're not addressed here in the vacant property registry ordinance is because just by virtue of the definition of the vacant property on page one going over to two, it talks about a building or a structure that's not presently legally occupied and, which is in such condition that it cannot legally be reoccupied without repair or rehabilitation, including or not, or not limited to any property meeting the definition of abandoned property under that statute. So just by virtue of the definition, it wouldn't indicate that it would be a seasonal seasonal property because it's not happening. So that's why that's not addressed here. The second question that I had was with regard to paragraph F1 and 2. It talks about the difference between waivers granted by the council on consultation with the council to an individual that had a vacant property versus an entity experienced in rehab or redevelopment or development. And I did not change that, only because the intent of the ordinance itself is to reduce the amount of time that a property is vacant, not to continuously give more time to the property to remain vacant. So it's really, the intent is to try to push people along and get them to develop the properties if they can, and they have to sell the properties, but certainly not sit there any longer and just be sitting on these properties that are, you know, dilapidated and blighting the neighborhoods. So, the way this reads for an individual owner, it's actually less stringent on them to get the waiver for the extension for the second year, for the registry for the initial year, I'm sorry, because all they have to do is make a written request, and then the municipal officer, which would be myself, you have to find that there's compelling conditions outside of the owner's control that made it impossible for him to restore the property within that initial 12-month period. With regard to a developer, it really is referring to, say, a property developer that's dealing with maybe one or two or package of properties that are vacant and abandoned, and they're planning to put together a package to develop them uniformly, which is something that we deal with under the abandoned properties program. And it talks about, where by virtue of financing, market, or other conditions, the project may require more than one year for realization, that they're entitled to request extensions, unlimited extensions. Now, what I explained to a customer in my email was that, you know, obviously, the standard there is that they have to show that there's reasonable progress toward completion of the project to get the extension. So obviously, if they're making reasonable progress, the idea is that, you know, if one year goes by and they're still, and they've shown that reasonable progress is being made, the idea is probably not going to be another year, two years, or more than another year to finish it. So, again, the intent of the ordinance is to reduce the amount of time that these vacant properties stay the way they are and to really push people to start doing something.
I guess my only question is, because I get the difference between the original threshold for the individual owners' law, it's just the written, as opposed to judgment. Why couldn't the same extension be offered to an individual homeowner? Why would it just be cut off at one year, as opposed to the developer being allowed more than a year?
Well, again, as I said, I mean, the intent is to try to push people along and not to really drag it out longer.
But why is there a different extension period for individuals versus developers?
Because with developers, sometimes you're doing, they're taking, they're taking a package of properties. I mean, the abandoned properties ordinance, they're taking a package of, say, three or four or five properties in a neighborhood and developing them all in a package. So they have to get financing for that project. They have to go through land use approvals, et cetera. So that's what the intent is behind that.
Okay.
Certainly, that doesn't mean every developer that comes to me, and obviously upon advice of the council, that they're going to get the extension. If they're kind of dealing with one property, then the odds are we're going to deny the extension longer than a year, maybe two years.
So the assumption is the homeowner with one home should be able to get it done in a year?
That's correct, yeah. And again, this isn't saying that, all this is saying is that you're just waiving the registry.
Right.
That's all, I mean, not saying anything more than that. That home can remain vacant, it's just going to be on the vacant property or registry, and they're going to have to pay the fee.
They're going to pay the fee.
So really, the only benefit is that you're waiving that fee for the year. And I think that was, those were the only questions that I had. They've got back to me anyway. I don't know if there's other ones.
What was the one I remember?
Just one point. In 2D and 2E?
Yes, oh, the pro-rated fee. What that means is, so the initial registration would be effective within 30 days after assuming ownership of the vacant property, or 30 days after the building becomes vacant. So say if the council adopts this ordinance today and this becomes law. So now, within 30 days of any property becoming vacant, they would have to register the property, and they have to pay the initial fee. So we would also, as of the time that it becomes law, set a renewal date. That would be a uniform renewal. So we would say we pick January 1st as a renewal. So today's April, whatever today's date is. So from April to January, they would pay a pro-rated fee for the first year. And then on the renewal date, they would pay the full fees for the renewal. So that's what that does.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Your last presentation on your agenda is, by Fire Chief Kevin Keddie. It's Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
Good evening. We applied for this grant back in 2013. Unfortunately, we were awarded the grant, but unfortunately, at the time, the money we were granted didn't cover the cost of the training class. So we deferred the grant. We were able to find a second company that could provide the necessary training for us for the amount of money that was granted in the grant. So now we're coming to you with a request to pass a resolution for us to be able to accept this FEMA grant. It's a $26,000 grant. The 95% FEMA part was $24,700, and the city's required 5% is $1,300, which I will pay for if granted out of my training line out in my budget.
Questions for the chief? Get out of here. The next item on your agenda is Items for Discussion. All right, number one is an extension of the ordinance regarding vending at the beachfront.
Counsel, I'm just going to pass out to you right now a copy of what's currently in the temporary city code regarding this issue. And my apologies to you, you didn't get this in the paper beforehand. This is in section 420 of the temporary city code, which is online. And just by way of background, this provision has been in effect in the city for a number of years and goes back to the redevelopment agreement that the city originally signed with Asbury Partners in 2002, which had provisions that granted the master developer the exclusive right to vending on the boardwalk and the issuance of permits associated with vending on the boardwalk. However, the city would receive a reasonable and customary fee for all such permits. The intention, going back to 2002, and which has been carried forward in the subsequent agreements that have been executed between the city and Madison-Asbury Retail, is that you didn't want vendors setting up a kiosk to sell items in competition with those that were, you know, renting space in the bricks and mortar of the pavilion properties. So they would have to go through a process where they applied for and got the OK from the redeveloper, and then they would be issued a permit from the city clerk's office, and the fee would come into the city. The ordinance that was adopted a number of years ago, and which has been, it had a sunset provision, and it's been renewed every time it was time for the ordinance to expire, provided for a procedure that if any vendor made application to the waterfront redeveloper for a vending permit within that area, and again, this is in the boardwalk area, not on the beach itself, but the area, the boardwalk and the adjacent green spaces and whatnot. If they felt aggrieved by having been denied the right for a permit, this ordinance built in a procedure whereby the aggrieved vendor could then make application to the city manager and appeal that decision of the waterfront redeveloper. And after a hearing, the city manager could override the determination of the waterfront redeveloper to deny that permit to that vendor. My understanding is that no one has ever been denied, and they've never had to go through this process, but it sets up a safeguard. And I know that through discussions that I've undertaken with representatives of Madison-Asbury Retail, they don't have any problems with it. The only reason I'm bringing this to your attention is that the last time this ordinance was re-adopted, in 2013, it again had a sunset provision, which said that it would expire as of November 30th, 2014, which time has already passed. So, the last redeveloper agreement that referenced this in 2010 with Madison-Asbury Retail said that when the ordinance was up for renewal, that the parties would engage in discussions, and if everything is okay, then an ordinance would be introduced to either re-up it, if you will, or to make changes on or before May 15th of the year. So we're at that point, and my understanding is that there's no problems in, you know, what's transpired to date. And we're just looking to bring this back to you for your action, not at tonight's meeting or at Wednesday's meeting, but potentially for introduction at the May 11th meeting. Is it May 11th or May 13th?
13th.
13th. The other alternative is that if it's so simple that all we're doing is taking out the date, the expiration date, you could decide that you don't want to have these continued ordinances that have an expiration date, and that you just want to take out the expiration date, because it's been in effect for all these years, going back to 2002. It could be addressed through the recodification process, as simply as removing that expiration date. Because right now, the Code Committee, Deputy Mayor Quinn, myself, and Ms. Lamberton have been involved in reviewing the ordinances, and we're going to be making recommendations soon to the council for the new code. And this could be worked into the new code that way.
Great.
So there's no action that I'm looking for you to undertake on Wednesday. I just wanted to put this on your radar screen, and we'll be back to you with a recommendation for the next set of council meetings.
Anything else for Fred? Your next matter on your agenda is Appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
We're probably going to be, on Wednesday, making some appointments to the Parking Committee, not the entire committee, but a couple of appointments. We have some older resumes that we want to double-check, that those people are still, or older applications, those people are still interested in being on it. So we would make some appointments, not all of them. And I'll get them to Melody and the rest of the council in the next 24 hours.
And I have one appointment to the Code Committee that I'll give you for Wednesday.
And there is a vacancy on the Housing Authority, which I, for everybody I put in the coaster. So I'm not saying we have to make that decision by Wednesday, but if we can get it up on the website and advertise it and see who would like to be appointed to the Housing Authority. Wednesday, I will be reappointing Donna Tropoli, that's the mayor's appointee to the Housing Authority, because her term expires April 27th or something, so she can continue to go to the meetings.
And we have some old, we had people apply a while ago, I think.
I saw you sort of sent something to Melody.
We have those somewhere, I think, just so we'll add those to the, whatever comes in new.
Anyone else?
More appointments?
Okay, next matter on your agenda is Review of Agenda Items for the April 22nd, our regular meeting.
Couple quick questions. Thank you. 2014 backup we're buying, it's new. It's not a demo?
My understanding, it's new.
It has, doesn't have 200 hours on it? I mean, it's, because it's 2016, so we're buying the 2014. I just want to make sure we're buying a new one that isn't a demo.
I'll make sure.
Okay. Individual Resolutions, 2015-168. I believe, I understand it, but I think somebody should be here to explain it that night. A resolution authorizing the issuance of not-to-exceed $7 million tax anticipation notes. Says 7,000, that's 7 million. So just, Mr. Gartson, I'm going to make it clear that it's not, everybody knows. 2015-170 and 171, these both have to do with boutique hotel. I just want to make sure, nothing's changed, right? So, nothing's changed, we're...
Right, that was my question as well. When we have, like, minor changes, like we had for the abandoned properties, or vacant properties, is there any way that we can, this just takes a lot of time to, like, go back through my last agenda, find my notes from that one, and check it with the new, is there a way to, like, highlight?
Highlight it.
What was the change? I know it's another step, but it just might...
I did speak to Glenn Scolton about this.
Okay.
Particularly that and the, right, the overabundance of emails that just kept coming and coming. So, but I will discuss that with him.
All right, thanks.
That's all I have on the agenda.
I just had a real quick one, and maybe this is for Wednesday night, but 2015-167, which is the temporary appropriations. So I'm just not understanding, I just need to get up to speed on how that works. So when it says "from," does that mean from, well, this year's?
Yeah.
And how do we go from 35 to 45? Work, that's a great, let's keep doing, let's keep doing that.
I saw that one, that one I thought was a typo also, yeah, because it's the same line item, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And the other line items, I'm assuming are, we had nothing because it was for the grant, the three grants, two for Springwood and one for the fire. So, okay, I just didn't understand how we work from 35 to 45.
Either way, so Ricky can explain that also.
Okay.
Anything else on the agenda?
Matters from city council members. I'm sorry, public participation.
Do you want to swap it?
No, we do council members first and then public participation, right, Tony? Just because if we answer questions, we save the public from getting up. I got nothing.
I don't have any.
The only thing I have is that we finally secured the final piece of financing we need
for the Springwood Avenue Park. And the park is definitely going to bid within the next two weeks, and we are hoping to have shovels in the ground by June 1st. So that's good news. And the final piece of financing came from Monmouth Conservation Foundation, and I spent yesterday with them, and they are very positive, and they're very high on Asbury Park, and they're going to be aggressively raising more funds for us. So on May 3rd, there's going to be a fundraiser at Tallulah's. It's called Pizza and Pasta Party, sponsored by MCF. And for anybody who would like to go, the fee price is $60 per person, but the proceeds will go to the Springwood Avenue Park. Thank you.
I have some, but I'll wait. I believe the RFPs could just us tomorrow?
They're due tomorrow, I hear.
I had a couple of small concerns about the skate and surf festival. I talked to Fred, they've been solved. The S group, I mean, is in there, I just didn't see it. One quick thing, the Honorable Lieutenant Governor and Secretary of State will be in Asbury Park tomorrow, and Lieutenant Governor would like to invite everyone, along with New Jersey female legislators, to a press conference concluding the Dress Our Vets Initiative benefiting Shooting Warriors Foundation.
Shooting what?
Shooting Warriors Foundation.
Suiting.
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 Clothes. Clothes. The Lieutenant Governor and the legislators will be at the BFW 0701 Lake Avenue at 3:00 tomorrow. I would like to join her there. That's it.
Anyone else?
Matters from the city manager?
I have two short ones. First, I would like to publicly thank, all right, and acknowledge the Boardwalk Vineyard Church located in Neptune Township for a very generous donation of $500 that will be used to supplement program activities for the senior center and recreation. The second matter is the work to add additional parking spaces to mill and to pave the municipal parking lot is going to begin on this Wednesday. Actually, the concrete work will be started in front of the building. I want to apologize in advance for the inconvenience, but I think everybody will agree is that the paving of the municipal lot is well, way, way overdue. That's all I have.
Matters from the city attorney?
I don't have anything right now.
Going to public?
Public.
May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker?
One second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from that speaker.
Did you? Should I start?
Yes.
Hi, Daniel Weiss, 1205 Fourth Avenue. First of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for the thankless volunteer work you're doing. I know how hard it is. And that said, I do want to offer some constructive advice and some very serious concerns that I have regarding two issues, which involve governance and finance. So they're really related. I worked as a volunteer also and a board of trustees for almost seven years. We had an executive director guiding us. If she was gone for one meeting, even for a vacation, things kind of ground to a halt. So for a year and a half, we have fired two city managers. Right now, we're kind of in this gray zone. Tony is absolutely doing a great job, but he's working hard. I see some of the emails coming from him. I'm working on the parking, the bridge committee for the traffic on Sunset Avenue Bridge. There are emails coming, 7:00 in the morning, 9:00 at night. He's overwhelmed. I want to know, especially with what's going on with the Moody's notice that there could be a credit downgrade for Asbury Park, what is going on with the appointment for a city manager? It's like we are a ship without a captain. And on the same token, what is going on with the CFO? Nobody seems to ever be able to answer Rita's questions and a lot of other questions regarding our total city debt. And these are two critical positions that need to be filled urgently. And I think, instead of putting out fires, my very constructive advice to all of you is focus on putting the best people in place. And this is really critical, and I'm begging you to make this your priority. So this is absolutely critical, so we can all get answers, and so that other agencies can start looking at us with a little bit more stability. I feel that we've been going on a long time with a lot of delays, and I'd like to ask all of you right now, is there any update on what's going on with the city manager hiring process?
I can, I can say a couple, just, or no?
No, 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 absolutely, I just want, is that all your questions? Because?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, I could go on to a few more things, but I just, I want to.
We're not going to have a course conversation.
Okay, so I just really want to focus on those two issues, that I think it's critical, getting a city manager in place and getting a CFO in place. So I'm curious, because I know I speak for a lot of people who are curious, what steps have been taken?
Just to clarify one thing, we did let one city manager go, the other one, we just didn't renew the contract, just so everyone's clear on that part of it. And in terms of Tony Nuccio, actually, I think he was going to announce this Wednesday. I think everybody knows how hard he's working, and he's doing a great job. In the spirit of him continuing to do a great job, we got him an assistant, I don't know the exact name.
Deputy.
A deputy.
Well, aren't we trying to phase out the deputy mayor position for obvious reasons?
I don't think you can run the city without some sort of assistant to the city manager. So while we're going through the city manager options, the companies that want to headhunt and so on and so forth, and obviously talking to the state about their visions, Kevin's going to be, as of Wednesday, assisting Tony. So it isn't all going to fall on Tony, who, again, I want to reiterate, I think is doing a great job.
Kevin Kettie.
Kevin Kettie.
Over here in the corner, the blue shirt.
And we love Kevin, and Tony needs the help, so I applaud that.
And the one thing we talk about all the time is a full-time CFO. I don't think anyone disagrees with you.
I did, no.
Okay, well, then, well, you can, you can, the person who took over, the person who is our, if we want to order paperclips, the person at the state that we now go to, Mr. Cunningham, you can elaborate on that conversation, wants us to keep Ricky no matter what, just thinks.
And I said, when I said I do it this time, just because last week, we did meet with Mr. Tim Cunningham, we took Tom Neff's place as far as head of DLGS, and both he and our state monitor, George Huber, both said, they sat in on many recent other towns looking for CMFOs, and there's nobody out there. Either somebody's got tenure and they're not going to leave, and what you're going to get, you're going to have to replace in a year or two. They were deeply impressed with the job that Mr. Garts is doing, and they said, we're not going to micromanage, do what you want to do, but, right, and this was, Mr. Garts was not in the room. And they were just, he ratted off numbers left and right and said, he's on top of this game. Now, as far as Rita not getting, how much we're owed, I totally agree with you. I mean, how much we're bonded, that would be, you'll have that tomorrow. I mean, that's, that's public information. I didn't know she was ever not told.
I'll let Rita pick her own arguments. It just seems like when, when she's asked questions repeatedly about that. But, so, I agree that our part-time CFO is great, and he answers your questions quickly. So I know my time is just about up. What I'll do is just beg of you to reconsider what both of you suggested a year ago, and it was in the Sun, which was that you were going to establish an advisory committee, a budget advisory committee, and so it's not on the website now. So I would really strongly urge you that this is a critical committee, that you need to, five months into your second tenure, you need to get that going. And you've got some.
Three months.
Three months. So you've got great people in the community with financial, institutional financial knowledge, and I would urge you to get going on that to help liaison with the temporary CFO, or part-time CFO.
And just a quick follow-up to what Mr. Cunningham said, most towns are going to part-time CMFOs and using other ones.
Okay.
Just because of the lack of talent out there.
And along with that, with the part-time, and if that's what most towns and cities are doing, but I would, I would also urge you to really follow up on what you promised. Thank you.
Hi, Maureen Nevin. Do you like court? I just wanted to say I think you are doing a great job, and I like the transparency. It might, it might help if you kind of introduce the people when they come up, rather than them just identifying themselves to you, if they, I used to cover a town where the mayor would say, you know, so-and-so is here tonight. He would actually address the audience and say, so-and-so is here tonight because of the blah, blah, blah.